It's a little after 6:30, so I'd like to get started. Good evening. My name is David Shett. I'm the project manager for the proposed Route 12 roadway reconstruction project, which we presented this evening. I work at the project management section at the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's Highway Division headquarters in Boston.
Can you come over to the box?
Yep. Is that there?
Yes.
Okay, if you haven't already, if you could take my hand to sign in. We have a sign-in sheet on the table in the back, and there's also some some of our representatives walking around with iPads, and they can help you sign in if you haven't already. If you would like your attendance to become part of the public record, please make sure that you sign in. Also, on the table in the front, there are handouts. I think we still have some. If we don't, or if you didn't get one, you can go to the Mastard website. If you do a Google search for "design public hearings," you'll find Leamester. The handout is posted. You can look at it at home or print it out at home. I'd like to take a minute to introduce the members of the hearing panel tonight. On my left, our Mastard District Reoffice, Laurie Shattuck and Ann Sullivan. To my immediate right is Tom Bigelow. He works for Green International, which is Mastard's design consultant for the project. On the far right is Mario Russo with Mastard, Right-Away Bureau. Our transcriptionist, Walter Manstein, over at the table on the left, is from Arlington Typing and Nailing, and he will be making the verbatim transcript of tonight's hearing for the public record as required by law. So during this presentation, we're going to discuss existing issues and conditions on the roadway, the project limits that we're going to try to address tonight as part of this project. We'll also discuss the project goals, history, and then the engineers from Green International will give you an overview of the improvements that are included in the scope of this project. Our Mastard Right-Away Representative, Mario, will discuss the right-of-way procedures for any maintenance that will be required for construction. We will then discuss the environmental permitting, and also talk about scheduling funding for the project. Finally, we will open it up for our questions and comments, which will also be recorded on the official transcript. So before we get started, I just want Laurie to take everybody who's got any limits of the project. The what is on the right side of the slide behind you. The current limits of the project are from Sterling Town Line to Tatchi Street. Tatchi Street is just south of the Leamester Storage Solutions building. Project length is just over two and a half miles. The posted speed on the project is 40 miles an hour, and the average daily traffic per day is 15,200 vehicles. So issues and reasons the project is initiated. The main reason this project was initiated is due to the storm payment conditions. Pavement in the corridor has significant amount of cracking, which I'm sure all of you have seen. And there's also a lot of utility trenching in the corridor that's eliminated a lot of pavement markings and made the roadway surface deteriorate. There's also high crashes in the corridor, particularly at the intersections. Rear end crashes are predominantly high, especially in the street. Part of the project, we're going to be working, doing work at the Fall Brook Bridge, which needs repair. And the Litchfield intersection, we're also going to change that significantly. We're proposing a roundabout, which we'll talk about over a few minutes. This intersection has a crash rate that is significantly higher than the average intersections within the District 3 area, District 3 area. The corridor also has a lack of bicycle combinations that we're going to try to address this project. A lot of non-repliant ADA pedestrian accommodations. There's poor driveway curb cut control. A lot of driveways are wide open, so it creates kind of a free-for-all atmosphere going in and out of adjacent lots. And there's also substandard design, a drainage system within the project that we're going to, we want to address. So here's some pictures of the Fall Brook Bridge. This bridge was constructed in 1915, and it was widened in 1934. The last inspection was done March 1st, 2021, and weight restrictions are currently in place at this bridge. The structure is going to be replaced to support current design loads. The decked superstructure and substructure, when they were inspected in March 2021, all categorized as safe condition, so this bridge is going to be replaced. The Litchfield intersection has antiquated signal equipment. You can see that the pavement markings are faded. ADA ramps and woks are substandard and are disrepair. That's going to be addressed. So these are a couple more examples of the pavement condition. You can see the significant cracking, utility trenching, faded pavement markings, and lack of signage. These slides illustrate four sidewalk conditions. You can see the lack of bicycle combination, poor access management. Asphalt curves from the corridor have been torn up by snowplows. The shoulder width is about 3D in this picture, which isn't enough to accommodate cyclists. Cracking and settlement in the pavement, you can see it around the existing drainage manhole, manhole with the catch basin entrance settlement. And the wide open parking lots that I mentioned create a free-for-all atmosphere for cars entering and exiting businesses. The drainage outfalls along the corridor aren't functioning as they were designed, mostly due to the, they're being plugged. So the entire drainage, either plugged up or collapsed, some of these pipes need to collapse. So the entire drainage system, pipes that are still there and can function will be cleaned out. So they are functioning, and we're also proposing new catch basins and new pipes where necessary. So what do we want to accomplish? Project goals. So these goals are what I've just talked about. You know, pavement, bike accommodation. We want to make it more friendly for multi-modal pedestrians. New curbs, new sidewalks, new striping and signage. We acknowledge that the speeds up there are high, so some of the techniques we're using with the curbs and the narrowing the travel lanes a bit, the traffic cones, so we're trying to lower the speeds. And we'll get Tom get into that a little more and some of the other ways that we're trying to do that. So at this point, I think we turn it over to Tom to talk a little more about more detail about the proposed project. Thank you, David. Can everyone hear me okay?
No.
How about now?
Not really.
We have to be really clear.
When did you hear much of anything that has been said so far?
I'm Tom Bigelow for Green International, as Dave said. So one of the main purposes of the project is to improve pavement throughout the project months. So one of the main things that'll be done is, starting at the Sterling Town Line all the way up to Tatchi Street will be the middle and structural roadway, which will help provide additional strength to the roadway and also provide some riding service after the pavement has been reconstructed and the drainage has been reconstructed as well. Another main component of the project is providing ADA compliant sidewalks. So there'll be new sidewalks constructed throughout the project. There'll be new sidewalks on both sides of the roadway, starting at Lake of Holbrooke, which, remember, the project area is just south of Willard Street. So both sides of the roadway will have bike sidewalks from Lake of Hill all the way to Tatchi Street. And then, starting at the Sterling Town Line, there'll be a new sidewalk on the west side of the roadway, which is the southbound side of the roadway. New on-road bicycle combinations are also part of the project in the form of bike bicycles. And also improved air section geometry, including a roundabout at Litchfield Street, which is a modern roundabout design, designed to accommodate large truck trailers up to W67, which is typically the larger types of trucks that you'll see on those types of roadways. And one of the main goals is to, the roundabout, is to reduce speeds of the vehicles in and out of the roundabouts, and also they help reduce crash severity. But they also improve comparable level of service and number of cars that can accommodate be accommodated at the intersection compared to a truck. There are also signal improvements proposed at Willard Street, which will also be added to the project. Driveway access management will help eliminate conflict points. As Dave said, there's very large driveways out there, some 60, 70 feet wide. So we'll be reducing the driveway width down, so cars can still get in and out of them appropriate to, you know, the use of that property. But we're reducing them down so that way they're not put so wide, and it really helps reduce that conflict zone between pedestrians and drivers. It also helps control speeds and defines the pedestrian path, the pedestrian themselves. New signage and striping will be installed throughout the project months, as well as upgrades the drainage systems and colors, which will help improve drainage capacity, improve deteriorating pipe sections. There's some, we saw on some locations, some types of clogged segments, so that'll get cleaned out, which will also help the drainage, along with the drainage system. We'll also be installing catch bases along the roadway, additional catch bases to help improve the surface drainage, both during rainstorms, but also that helps with the snow, the snow in the conditions as well. As a part of the improvements, utility relocations are proposed. Manual overhead utility relocations to help accommodate the ADA compliant sidewalks, so those utility poles will be out on the sidewalk, not in the shared access pass, we have those proposed. And as well to accommodate the geometric improvements at the at the Litchfield Road intersection, sorry, Litchfield Street intersection, as well as the Litchfield Street. So this next slide here is a proposed cross-section. And this is the cross-section of the southern portion of the job, basically starting at the Sterling Town Line and up to Lake of Holbrooke. So starting on the left side of the page, there's the bike sidewalk with the bicycle lane. A left-of-hand traffic lane in the southbound direction, followed by a right-of-hand traffic in the northbound direction, and finally, all the way to on the right, there's a bike lane as well. Now, north of Lake of Holbrooke, as you approach Willard Street and all the way to Tatchi Street, there is basically, it's a very similar cross-section of the roadway. The only difference here is that there's a sidewalk on both sides of the roadway, where there was only a sidewalk on the left side of the roadway, on the southern portion of the project. Now, as far as the intersections and the signals that we're updating and reconstructing, first is the Willard Street intersection with Route 12. What updated are being launched? The existing turn lanes that are there today, there's one, a left turn lane, Route 12, southbound, onto Willard Street. And there's also a right turn lane, westbound, to head north on Central Street. Those will be maintained in places of heart of the project. New handicap ramps will be, those, so they're concrete, we need a compliant handicap ramps. Those will be, they'll basically replace the existing handicap ramps. And as well, because we're adding a sidewalk up the west side of Central Street from the Sterling Town Line, there'll be new crosswalks and new handicap ramps on that westbound, western leg of Willard Street across Willard Street. Where there is a landscape highway today, that will be turned into a pedestrian recreation. And all of the pedestrian crossings will have updated ADA signals and also push buttons to accommodate the new handicap ramps that are being posted. Also, there, when a pedestrian is busy with the push button in order to cross the street through that pedestrian phase, that'll be what we call an exclusive pedestrian phase, meaning there won't be any left or right turning vehicles going along pedestrian that has the right-of-way to the crosswalk. So that will be a phase where only pedestrians want to cross the street. There are also vehicle detection loop detectors with light detection at the intersection. And those will help us optimize the signal timing to help reduce delays and improve level of service at the intersection. At the fire station right-of-way, we'll be updating the pavement markings. We'll do stop lights, and really the most important improvement at that intersection will be all of the brand new Starz, a new traffic controller, new traffic signals. And there'll also be a new preemption system that will be there for the fire department. So when they need to leave a fire emergency, those lights will still turn as they do, but that whole system will be replaced and upgraded to the current, to the current standards for that system. Now, the biggest year measure improvements are at Litchfield Street, where we're proposing a single-lane roundabout. The next slide has a graphic that shows what that looks like. With that roundabout, it's designed to accommodate current Mass DOT national standards for roundabouts. It's a single-circulating roadway with single lane approaches to all of the approaches. That includes both Central Street and also Litchfield Street approaches. As I said before, it's designed to accommodate traffic trails up to W67, and bicyclists and pedestrians are also accommodated at that. So this slide behind me is a graphic that shows that Central Street, Route 12, runs from right on the pitch, and Litchfield Street runs from the top. There are, as you approach the intersection on Central Street, there's a bicycle lane, court bicycles. Any bicyclists that's on the road wanting to navigate the roundabout would use bicycle ramps to get up on what's called a shared use path. So essentially, that sidewalk wires from five feet beyond the roundabout to 10 feet at the roundabout. And they would then use that shared use path to then cross the, to cross Litchfield Street to same heading north on Route 12, same thing in the southbound direction. So the bicycles are taken out of the roadway in order to, then onto the shared use path and navigate there. Pedestrians are also coming on that same shared use path. And at the crossings on Central Street, rapid tangling flashing icons, which are those yellow flashing light of pedestrian signs that are activated by a push button, those will be installed in order to increase safety for the pedestrians as they're crossing Central Street. There are also pedestrian recorations in between each light of the intersection. So say as you're crossing from, trying to cross Central Street from the east side of the roadway to the west side of the roadway, pedestrian only needs to cross one lane and travel at a time with a pedestrian recorion between for them to stop and wait for traffic on the other side of the roadway to stop and stop. The roundabout is what we're calling, what we call elliptical shape. So most roundabouts are usually circular. This roundabout is elliptical. And that is done to help reduce impacts to the bodies. On the top left quadrant of this intersection is the bank. And then, on the right-hand side of the pitch, you have the two gas stations, both for Sunoco. It's a mobile gas station now. So that elliptical shape has helped reduce the impacts to those roundabouts and those businesses. Utility relocations are required as a part of this, because there are some utility poles really within the existing signalized intersection, and those utility poles will move as part of the project. Another large component of the project is the replacement of the bridge over all road. There is a, as Dave said, the existing bridge is deteriorating, and it's near the end of its life. So we're replacing it with a single-span bridge with concrete deckings, and the above those will also be eradicated. The bridge has the same typical section as the rest of the project in this area, which is a sidewalk on both sides, bicycle lanes on both sides, bike compliant with one of the bookshelves, and it's one of these structures. And stage construction will also be required to construct the bridge. And a couple of little slides later on, I'll talk about how traffic is maintained at the bridge, but also in various locations of the project as well. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Mark to discuss some of the right-of-way impacts and how that has impacted the project, and then I will go over to the proposal business.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
All right.
Again, my name is Mario Russo, and I represent the Right-Away Bureau of Massachusetts Department of Transportation and Highway Division. The Right-Away Bureau is responsible for acquiring all necessary rights in private and public lands for the design and construction and implementation of this project. Procedures must comply with the state and federal regulations governing the acquisition process. Effective property owners will be contacted and protected under the Massachusetts General Laws, primarily 79. If a property, if a project is receiving federal funds, the property owner's rights are further defined under Title III of the Real Property Act of 1970 as amended. Effective property owners will be contacted by personnel from this bureau and consultants representing Mass DOT. The current 25% design indicates that acquisitions and fee, permanent takings, and easements will be required. I will be happy to take any questions that you might have after the meeting. So if you have any specific questions, I'll make your answer up again. Thank you.
This slide is to discuss the environmental permits that will be required for the interchanges. Water quality data forms and urban environmental coordination were conducted as a part of 25% design in the Mass DOT. And this project really has typical environmental permits that we can see for this type of project. There are two main ones, which is, first one is the Army Corps Engineers Permit, which is due to environmental resource impacts, permanent weapons associated with the bridge, the bridge reconstruction of all of it, and also some minor relevant impacts as we upgrade the drainage system, some of the outfalls where it brings pipes and some weapons. So there's the Army Corps Amendment, and then also the simulating impacts. We also will have the National Security Department to the Leamester Conservation Commission. And again, that is for weapon impacts and also bucklers on the packs and dirt running impacts that are, you know, is that all too good work that we've, the work that goes in here as part of our project. Now, for construction basing, any construction project obviously does have an impact on the traffic level. But obviously, with any construction project, we try to minimize those impacts as much as possible. So lane closures will occur during the construction of the projects. But the first thing with any construction project is the two-way traffic will be maintained at all possible. So just trying to shift the traffic over while completing work in the roadway and maintain two lanes of travel along each direction. When that is not possible, one-way alternating setups will be used with a police detail posted, with like the two police details given the volume of the roadway in order to allow work to appear within the roadway, but also allow the traffic to pass. And typically, those will be done during, you know, after the morning peak and before the afternoon peak starts. There is some potential for short-term detours or no more levels. And then, of course, because of the roundabout, we have an existing signal system being in place with the roundabout, we will have site-specific traffic control plans for the contractor to follow there. But because we have a major intersection, two lanes of travel will be maintained at all times through the intersection, as well as the traffic signal will be maintained until the circular to a roadway of the roundabout can be built and connected by the contractor there. And finally, construction basing, I think, of all work. Because of the construction of the bridge and the limited width on the bridge, we are going to be one-way alternating traffic with a temporary traffic signal. So there will be some delays with that, because only one-way travel won't be able to get by at all times. But the duration of that is expected to be about 18 months in order to do both phases of the bridge. Now, on the construction funding, the project is fully moving, using federal and state funds. The estimated total cost is $18.5 million. That includes the construction, and also includes the utility relocations, and also police details, but what does not include is right-of-way acquisitions. The project is currently programmed on the year 2024, tip year. And also, right-of-way acquisitions will end up being acquired by the state through that right-of-way process, as described by Mario. So for that, Dave, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thanks, Tom. So tonight, the plans are at a 25% design level. We still have several more steps to go before we're ready to advertise. We'll have a 75% design survey that'll come into Mastard for our engineers' reviews, which we'll also go to see. We'll have a 100% design review, and then a final plan spec estimate. So there's several more review processes that are going to happen. As Tom mentioned, the project is currently funded and programmed federal fiscal year FY '24, which means we have to advertise the project for construction between October 1st of this year and September, oh, no, sorry, not this year, but of 2023 and September 30th, 2024. Right now, the schedule looks like we're going to be advertising closer to the end of the federal fiscal year, sometime in August of 2024, or maybe early September. If that's the case, you would probably not see construction until spring of '25. You might see something in FY end of '24, you know, minor drainage improvements, but more than likely, you'll get started in beginning of '25 in the spring. So how will we keep you informed? This slide has different ways to submit emails and questions to the department if you have anything, either tonight or after tonight. The first email address is Carrie Vallee, who's the chief manager here. You can submit an email to her through the dot-tv dot highwayatstate dot ma dot us. There's also a public hearing website that will be, information will be posted up on that. So there's various ways that you can write in and ask questions. The plans that come in for review will also be coming into Leamester's Engineering Department. So they'll have full plans available at the same time we get them. So with that, I'd like to open it up to questions. Let me explain the procedure to do that. You know, the purpose of this hearing is to solicit your input for the project. That's why we're here tonight. So as you know, the plans are not fully complete, and we might not be able to answer all the questions that you have. all the questions that you have, although we are best to respond to them. Anybody that wishes to have his or her comments entered into the official hearing transcript, please stand up. Tonight, we're going to have people come up to the podium, identify yourself by name and affiliation, whether you're in a borough, concerned citizen, a local official, and if you can spell your last name, that helps our translators, transcriptionist, making the pervasive transcript. We have local access TV tonight and we're also filming for our MassDOT website. This will be available on our website. So we have an issue with microphones, so that's why we need people to come up to the podium. I just want to remind you too that the last sheet of the handout is a mailing sheet. If you have any questions you think about after you go home and you want to send them in, email them or send them in via that handout, you can do that. If you do it within 10 days of tonight, it will become part of the official record. So before I open it up to everybody, it's normal procedure to ask if any elected officials would like to offer their comments first. So if there are any elected officials here, I'd invite you to come up to the podium. Yes, sir?
Thank you very much. My name is David Cormier, C-O-R-M-I-E-R, and I represent the street, which is the, this is the heart of my district. So I just have a couple of questions, I guess, regarding the speed limit. From Tossie Street up until, I think, Kingdom Hall, it's 40 miles an hour. I think that's considered thickly settled and I'm wondering if we can have that reduced after this project is complete down to 30? I was reading the standards of the website and I think the standards in a thickly settled district of 30. I think beyond Leggett Hill, you know, keeping it 40 with the current situation, though it's not as developed there, might still be okay, but from Tossie Street till about at least Leggett Hill, it probably shouldn't be 30. So that would be one of my things that I wish you could look into, possibly address. Crosswalks, I know you mentioned them, the lights. Are there going to be any crosswalks mid-span or can you use the traffic light at the fire station for pedestrians to cross there? If you can put a crosswalk and allow pedestrians to activate that light as well? I think that would be a big help because some people like to, you know, go across the way to Hill Camino from 556 Central Street if they want to walk. They need a place where they can activate a light so that they can do that safely and not have to go all the way down to Litchfield Street. I mean, that's where they have to go now. And also, one of the residents there at Chapman Place asked me if it's possible to incorporate the light at the fire station into their complex. I don't know if you want to check with or work with the association here, see if that is something that the complex as a whole would be receptive to, but it is something that somebody did ask me. The Rotary, I know there's other Rotaries in the area. There's one in Lancaster, there's a couple down in Sterling, there's one in Princeton. One of the differences between those Rotaries and this one is there seems to be a lot of curb cuts very close to this Rotary, unlike a lot of the others in the area. So I'm just wondering if you can address, you know, how that's possibly affect this Rotary because it just seems to me like having a Rotary there, there's going to be a lot of activity going on with all those curb cuts and people going around the Rotary. So that'd be another thing that I'd like to hear more about with all the curb cuts And I think for now, those are my only concerns. So thank you very much and I'll be looking forward to seeing what the rest of the public and the constituents have to say and then maybe I'll follow up with questions or comments. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Just a quick response to a couple of those. The speed limit reduction is a process for that. It involves doing a speed study with the guns of the speeds that are out there and reducing it by a percentage of the actual running speed. And what you said about afterwards, doing that study makes a lot of sense because we're hoping that once we do this project, we're going to slow the speeds down. So that might be a good time to, you know, to take a look at something like that and see if we could change the posted speed. How you cross the fire station? We're not, I don't think we're putting any new mid-block crossings in, but ones that are there now, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, we're going to put them back and make them compliant with today's standards. We had one, one crossing mid-block, talked to somebody earlier tonight about putting in a wrap-up flash beacon. So it'd be push-button activated and stop the traffic. That's something we've got to look at. And we can take a look at the crossing at the fire station too. The, the roundabout curb cuts are a challenge and, you know, we've been, we've been working, we have to make sure we can get access to the gas stations and the businesses with the tanker trucks and so forth. So we've been working, looking at that closely. We've actually met with the different, with the gas stations out there. We're trying to channelize everything so it's, it's, everybody knows a little clearer where to go in and out of the businesses. So it is a challenge, but it, you know, we have done these roundabouts in that kind of atmosphere before and we're, we're working on trying to make it safer. Is there any other elected officials that would like to speak? Yes, sir, in the back.
My name is Claire Frida. I'm a Leamester's councillor at large and I was the board three councillor for 16 years prior to that 10 years ago. And I'm pretty familiar with the area. I've lived off of Central Street for 52 years and I've watched it grow and grow and grow. I'm a little concerned because I spent the last month calling, when this meeting was first announced, calling every business that I could get a hold of and not one of them was aware of the meeting tonight. Fortunately, the original meeting that was talking Zoom was put off until tonight. So I know there are many people here tonight because of having been contacted. So I'm glad to see that some of them will be speaking out there, I'm sure. You know, there, they've been businesses on that road for many, many years and I don't think anybody knows the area better than they do with their businesses in and out. And I think they, they will be instrumental to asking the questions and maybe giving some insight as to what we should be looking at. One thing I'm concerned about is the lighting on that street. It's almost has a tunnel effect from Tossie Street to Hill Camino. I drive that road all the time and last night was a perfect example. It was raining, it was windy, it was dark and there were two women walking on the right side of the road, completely dressed in black. If it wasn't so dark and windy, I probably would have been going a little faster than I was going. And we've already had a fatality in that area. We've also had a near fatality in that area and I'm not sure if there have been any more, but I know those two were very serious and that's that exact same area. So if you're going to be encouraging bicycle paths and pedestrian traffic, it really needs to be increased lighting, that whole area. I mean, that's going to be an integral part of this plan. It is, it's very important, it's important now, but if you're going to encourage, which everybody's encouraging, I mean, it's, it's good to be encouraging the bicycle paths and pedestrian traffic, but there's got to be all the pieces to work in there at the same time. There are many businesses, I think, that can offer, I know one will speak to it, but there's an assisted living facility that have very many independent-minded residents there that like to cross the street to go to the coffee shop, go pick up something at the store. And it's very difficult, they have a great plan with a bus that will drive people there, but I think there has to be, or there could be, a conversation with that assisted living facility to maybe have some kind of help crossing that roadway, whatever you could, you could suggest. I mean, there are people with wheelchairs, there are people walking, whether it be crosswalks, however, however that could be looked at. Then there are, there are many other businesses and hopefully they will speak tonight. But I'm, I'm concerned that the, and I know you can't contact everybody, but I'm concerned that, that not one business that I contacted in the past month knew about this meeting. So I'm hoping there aren't people that don't know about the meeting tonight and will know, you know, in the near future and will be made available for them to be able to comment. If you could contact and keep the city council abreast of information so that we can get information out to people that you might not get, I think that would be extremely helpful. I think there are going to be a lot of conversation as you go along. I mean, we, I know, we all know that that road needs help. I mean, it's, it's, like I said, when I moved there 52 years ago, there was one restaurant and one gas station from the center of town, you know, to where I live. And that's almost a sterling line. So, you know, it has developed a lot and it does need some, it's a lot of new housing. There are a lot of, a lot of improvements that need to take place. But there, there's also, you know, some road consideration is going to take place in the planning process. So hopefully, there will be a lot of conversation, there'll be a lot of discussion, there'll be a lot of contact with the, with the businesses. As I said, they know better than anyone, you know, what's going to be a plus or a minus to that area. And I think it's done right. I, I was representing the area where it has gas station was being built. That was a horror. We had traffic studies that said that intersection at Litchfield and Central was one of the worst traffic accident spots in the state. Fortunately, thanks to the planning board and the planning director at the time, we were able to relook at the, the project at, here then, within a year to come back and look at it. We had people taking less what they shouldn't have taken less. We were able to extend the island to the Benham. There were a lot of things that were done after the fact that weren't major, but as it was moved along, we were able to see what mistakes were made and what should have been done and were able to, to correct it before it cost a lot of money. But it's still a horror with two lanes trying to beat each other and then all of a sudden it's a dead start because someone turned into the gas station. So the, the traffic pattern remains to be looked at. I'm assuming there's a lot of data to, to traffic lights as opposed to Rotaries. Maybe if that could be available, just to see what, what the differences are, if we could get some information on that, just to see what, how Rotaries stack up. I mean, it seems to be a lot of Rotaries going in a lot of different places around the state. I'm a real estate raisin, so I'm driving around a lot in a lot of different communities, things like this, and I have a lot of Rotaries. Hopefully, that's a plus. I mean, I think we see what's happened in Sterling and it's certainly been beneficial to Sterling compared to what it was coming off the highway there. So I'd be interested to see the data as to why I think a Rotary there would be beneficial. That's it for now, but we're certainly ready to have a lot more questions in the future. Thank you for your time.
Forgive me, ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am, before you leave, come back in a second. I could not understand your last name. Would you spell it for me, please?
I'm sorry, my last name?
Yes.
Frida, F-Is in Frank, R-E-D is in David, A.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to respond a little bit to a couple of your points, it is difficult to get the word out to everybody about these hearings. Not everybody reads the newspaper anymore. They're working with the city to try to have the meeting notice published on social media and it's on our social media as well. But one of the things that we're, we'll be doing with this project and going forward is that you'll be able to see a video of this hearing off our website. So people that are here tonight, you know, they can watch that and they'll still have the ability to ask questions. So, you know, anybody that's not here, if you can spread the word, you know, to look at our website and, you know, in the next week or so, we'll have that up there. As far as the assisted living, we talked to somebody here tonight about that and we got some pretty good ideas on how to signalize control of people walking across the street. So that's, that's something we'll look at. The roundabout signal, we've studied that quite a bit in the last year and a half and we have, we've actually, we brought in another consultant that specializes in this and they've done reports and, you know, that's something we can, you know, offline, we can share some of that stuff with you. But there is a lot of data, a lot of traffic logs and we've studied it pretty well, so. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We did all this for you today and put up all these trees for you today. We figured if you were figuring eighteen and a half million dollars, we have to do a little something. My name is Dean Masarola, Mayor of the City of Leamester, full disclosure, a board member for MassDOT. And thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We, just so everybody understands this, we mailed out 159 letters to every property owner along the way. So last known address from the assessor's office, so that if there was somebody that didn't get something, we do a morning briefing, we advertise it there, we do a cable show. I mean, we've been talking about this now since the date that we had it postponed. So that's why I did see so many people here tonight because we really wanted to make sure that people knew about it as, as a way, as it affected them and people that traveled through the area, it just concerned residents of the city. And this is, first of all, it took a long time to get this project here. These projects just don't happen. There's a whole nother process to get a project on the Transportation Improvement Plan and then later on to get it funded. And so the project's 100% funded, right-of-way. Normally, the city would have to do the right-of-way issues, we'd have to come up with a payment for the right-of-way. 100% of that's being paid for by this, this grant. So that probably saves the city about a million dollars by, by it easy from right-of-way and everything else that's involved, not to mention the time it takes. But one of the big things that I heard about is certainly the, the roundabouts. And just so everybody knows, we spent about two years looking at this because we were opposed originally and asked that it be looked at and relooked at and then re-relooked at. Because in this area, we, we've all seen these roundabouts and I think the initial ones that were put in weren't real great. And so I think we're a little shy on, on, as soon as anybody I talked about this project, the only area concerned was, as soon as I said the word roundabout, there was a, oh, no, you know, no, please don't. Anyway, I don't think we spent a little more time on that, roundabout, I can't, but the big thing is, on a positive note here, right now, there are areas where there's sidewalks, which are just basically integrated into the roadway. So we have students and residents who will stand there and wait for the bus to be picked up. And there's nothing that defines the sidewalk versus the roadway. And now we have the granite curb in with real sidewalks. And as a, for instance, you get down around the cowards, it's about 500 feet long of just open driveway, open pavement. You're standing there waiting for a school bus and on one of the edges, somebody stops, somebody behind them sees them stop and starts to go around them and then suddenly there's a student standing there. I've seen it happen, really dangerous. That area, the most critical area here, not that it always is, but right at that area where the gas station seemed to be, from there on out into Willard Street, both sides of the street, it's just housing developments there, retail, that's the area really of concern, major concern there in terms of, when your council talks about crosswalks and proper lighting. I'd really like to have you take a second look at that if you can. That's, there are a lot of elderly and just kids and it's a busy section that, Room 12. The other area is kind of rural, but that area is really critical and, you know, there's a variety store on one side, that side, so it's crisscross all day long. And, you know, you sell the tire, that's, that's pretty sizable. So this is a huge project. This is a big win for us out here, that project's almost 19 million, it's big. It's going to give us proper sidewalks, proper curb in, it's going to give us a new roadway, a new drainage, a new bridge. Instead of piecemealing it each time with a different grant, we're going to be able to fix the whole thing at once and all be done together. So, yeah, I think that the roundabout, I don't think you can explain it a little better, but there's one in a Toyota dealership and it's all the trucks come from Keating and Powell and they basically just drive over. It's not, there's not enough room to turn. There are a couple in Fitchburg that are, my, probably part examples of it. Council Free said there are a couple in Lunenburg, Lancaster, Sterling that seem to work well right there at 190 and Route 12. But that's the one reaction I get is as soon as somebody hears the word roundabout, it's usually a sigh after that. So again, this is going to fix a lot of the problems, the fire station, at Willard Street, sidewalks, all of that is going to just be a big plus for us. So, but I just want everybody to know, we spent a lot of time on this roundabout issue back and forth and they took a look and another look and another look and, and the data just keeps coming back saying, this really makes sense to have the roundabout here. So that's how we got here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, like the mayor said, we have spent a lot of time on that intersection and originally we had a signal in there and on, you know, further review with the department, they wanted to take a look at the roundabout option. It was, it's been studied for about a year and a half, it slowed us down. We had, you know, a couple of reports have been done on it. The whole idea, the summary of the reports is that, you know, it's supposed to be a safer intersection, it's supposed to slow the traffic down and channelize the traffic. It's supposed to be easier for pedestrians to get or navigate through the intersection. When you're crossing the street as a pedestrian, you only have to look one way and you get out to an area where there's a pedestrian refuge and then you look the other way, it's supposed to be more safer pedestrians. The level of service is also supposed to be better or the same or better because you won't have people waiting at a red light, you know, off peak hours, you'll be able to circulate around on a roundabout. You know, we were talking to somebody earlier tonight, sometimes the roundabouts, you know, you have people flying through there and, you know, you might have somebody jumping at a curb. It's important that the roundabout, the center of the roundabout is maintained so you have good sight distance through. A lot of times in some municipalities will work with local gardening clubs where they will maintain the middle of the roundabout with some, you know, low, low shrubs or, you know, some kind of green space so it looks nice and yet you can still see around it. You know, that's something we can do here. So that's, I don't know if the time is going away. Okay, we'll send it back.
Hi, it's Alolo, District Office. I will, the mayor mentioned the Fitchburg Roundabout and the Lancaster Roundabout. Those were our first and second roundabouts in the district. So they didn't come out great and we actually had to go back and retrofit them, but we learned a lot from that and they've been much, much improved since then. We've learned a lot just from putting those in, we have videotaped them, we watched all the, we watched what traffic was doing. So, yeah, we can, we'll have to take, we'll have to agree that we didn't do a good job on those, but the ones that we're building now are much better.
Thanks, Ann. Yeah, I think that's something we've heard tonight about the mid-block crossings and getting people safely across the road. So that's, that's something we'll, you know, we'll try to look at a little closer and see pedestrian patterns for, you know, origin destination where people are walking to and see if we can help with that. Are there any other elected officials that would like to talk tonight? Okay. Seeing that, I'd like to open it up to the public. Once again, if you could come up to the podium, state your name, spell your last name. I'd like to have, everybody have a chance to talk before we cycle through and have people go up a second or third time, just so everybody can have, you know, speak. So we're ready to start.
Good evening, my name is Peter Ovenczyk. In this area of the developer Brooks Pond.
Can you spell your last name, please?
B is in O V E N C Y. Peter. My first reaction's gonna be very positive and I'm very grateful. I think it's a phenomenal job. I like the roundabout. Let me begin with wild. When you, I developed a large quadrant, Route 12, called Brooks Pond in Highville. It's difficult to get out. One of the things I am a little worried about is that the elimination of the light. The lights at Willard Street, I'm partially funded, and the lights at Willard Street create traffic breaks. And those traffic breaks are taken advantage of by individuals trying to access the road from the other direction. So I'm worried about that, we won't keep the Willard Street one. And the other one is, what I like about it is that as you come out of Brooks Pond, you can take a right and go through the roundabout if the traffic is such that taking the left is difficult to cross the lane. I think it's a lot safer and it's not that inconvenient and it's very close. So it gives that person coming out an alternative if the traffic is happening, because it forces them to move, but I think that's pretty genius. That's good. I worry a little bit about coming north and wanting to take a left into Brooks Pond. And I would like to at least look at the turn lane that is a large number of cars. And those people are going to do that regardless of whether they have the turn lane. What I worry about is that it would back up the traffic if they can't cross into Brooks Pond Road. So if there was a turn lane, it would be to the advantage of the pond or the flow of the traffic to allow it to continue to come. I would be happy to give a land in the front that you needed for that. I do, so those two things I would like to mention. Another thing I want to mention is I want to, I'm worried about the, there is a crosswalk that's right there in front of Brooks Pond that being eliminated. It isn't safe. You do have this problem where you have to sort of look at it from two lanes of traffic going pretty high speed to try to make it across. I personally have done it a few times and it's interesting. So, but there is a crosswalk that the elimination that would just cause people to lose the ability to at least by standing on the crosswalk to stop the traffic. I know that's the law, so I just hope it doesn't get eliminated. If you could put a push button there, you have this huge retail establishment on one side of the road, a residential on the other side, people do get encouraged to walk, that's where we put all these walkways, sidewalks in. I'd like to have you consider that. My last thing is that the road was built a long time ago and when it was built, there were really no environmental considerations back in early 1800s. And so the, all of the drainage, you know, from that section of Route 12 is just funneled through tight into a culvert and it, some of it doesn't have rates on it and you can have footballs go through it. I mean, it's not just the public way, the whole retail establishment on that side, all of the real estate that's built on the other side of the highway, fruit trees, et cetera. It's an oddity that the, sometimes the DPW, when somebody wants to do something on the side of the road, have them call me and see if I'm approved, which is ridiculous, but because all the drainage is piped directly to us. Now, having said that, my big concern is the quality of the water because it feeds a pond that we use for irrigation for, for crops. And so to the extent that we will be happy to participate, we can try to come up with some sort of remediation of all of this drainage we provide all the, some of the engineering or not, so that we can try and make the water when it reaches the irrigation part, it'll go. So from an environmental point, we give up the size of the portion of the land to do that, it's important to us. An astronance is across the road and a turn, it must be a turn going north. And again, benefits to the public, not to the developer, because those people are going to take that turn anyways. Instead of stopping all the people, backing them up. And again, I do regret it, but I find it to be a fascinating, good idea and it allows people during heavy traffic, most of the time the traffic is not heavy, but during heavy traffic allows them to stay right over on the rotary, get the left without cutting off all the traffic. Good for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a follow-up, we are not taking out any existing crosswalks. We're going to leave them in, obviously refresh the striping signage and we're going to look at some type of controlled rapid flash and beacons in some of these areas to make it safer for people to cross. As far as the water quality, we have, any reconstruction project, we have to, there's certain standards we have to meet for water quality. At the very least, we'll be having, you know, deep some catch bases to try to catch sediment, you know, so the quality of the water should be better after the project than it is now.
Hi, Gary Zouy. I live off Lake Gett Street by Eagles and I also manage Chapman Place condominiums. And one concern I have, and I know you brought up drainage, but I talked to a gentleman earlier, he wasn't sure if it was on the map, but we have a drain that continually, continually overflows between our property and the corner and the used auto dealer. I don't know if that's on the map, so I'd like to make sure that does get addressed because every major rainstorm, it fills up and it's a river that goes down and bridges it, it's not much. So hopefully that gets addressed and improves the drainage there. As far as the bike lane, I'm trying to visualize the size. I don't know if there's a study done on the bikes, but I've been in Chapman Place 16 years and I maybe see a couple of bikes a week, if that. I don't know if it's just standard to put bike lanes and bike lanes in, but as Peter mentioned earlier, these turn lanes, I don't know if you consider, again, I'm not against bikes, but this is a ma- major road, sometimes it takes me two to three minutes just to get out of Chapman Place, even taking a right turn over the last year or two, is maybe take bike lanes out, have more turn lanes to go in because there's a lot of businesses in there, there's a lot of traffic and to keep it flowing, the turn lanes might be better than bike lanes. Again, I'm not against bikes, but that might be a consideration to look at. Another thing we're talking about is these crosswalks and putting it at the fire station, keeping the ones that are there, hope, you're having sidewalks on both sides and I always look at, hope people can walk down into a crosswalk. And again, I know from Sunrise, people can't do that as much, but if you end up with five or 10 crosswalks going along there, I think the traffic's going to get worse along the Going to the lights, as mentioned earlier, someone talked about having the lights in conjunction with the, the north entrance of Chapman Place. I don't think the residents would be against that because I know we're kind of diagonal to the fire station, so when they come out, they're just a little off-center because their islands right at our entrance. So if that was to be looked at, again, feel free to contact Chapman Place and we can look at putting that in there because I'm sure the residents would probably love that because there's been a few accidents there trying to get out. It's not easy, again, there's a lot of traffic. And that's all, thank you. Thank you.
My name's Joan O'Connor, I live at 19 Anne Metal Pond Drive, Lancaster, it's the Fallbrook Townhouses, that is right across from El Camino. I have three points I'd like to make. The first, I'd like to re-emphasize their fetus concern about the lighting along there because I've seen too many cars come out of our entrance and make a left in its own direction, people are on the right side, it's only a bright lane. And if a car's coming this way and going too far, that car is almost swerving in and almost hitting pedestrians. So either needs to be widened, either going to do sidewalks on both sides. The second point I have is around drainage. I'm not too sure where our water thing starts from, but it runs behind the fire station and we have a drainage pipe that goes under our property. Very bad storms, we have the same issue as Chapman, it's coming up and over like six feet and it goes down into the trailer park of Fallbrook. And my third concern is when you're starting this project is about safety. Fallbrook condo has a back entrance on Litchfield Street and a lot of people use it to cut through and come out by El Camino, not have to do about the lights. And it's private property and we had kids there and things like that. And I am afraid when you start doing that rotary, people are going to be cutting through. And we had to put speed bumps in there 25 years ago because people were just racing through our property and that's the only way we could get in the shut down. But that is a real safety concern for us and our residents at Fallbrook is how are you going to handle it because you know they're going to come through our place. They're not going to wait to do one way. So that's my concerns.
Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am, before you leave, could you spell your last name?
Yeah, O apostrophe C O N N O R.
Thank you.
And just to address the question about drainage and some of those comments, there are drainage improvements as part of the project, we're upgrading pipes, replacing pipes that are deteriorated and doing an analysis of the pipes to make sure they're properly sized. So that way, you know, I think a lot of the water that you're seeing during some of these high storms are because the pipes are either not cleaned out, there's a lot of sediment in them. So between that and also upgrading the pipes and upsizing them down to proper size, we're looking for those improvements to help address a lot of the, some of the flooding concerns that have been brought up through some of the comments as part of the project. Some of these concerns are some that we have already heard, we've discussed with the town and stuff, so, so we are looking at all those improvements as far as the project.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Schirmer. Spelled S T H R and I think it, I said. I live on Dogwood Road and one of the things I noticed that you didn't have in your plan, I didn't notice that they didn't have a traffic light down the bottom of Grant Street and Central. It's, the traffic's unbearable there. I live on Dogwood, which comes off of Grant Street and the traffic, the people come down Grant Street, they go down Dogwood to go to the Litchfield so they can get a traffic light at the bottom. And I almost got wackier about three times on Central Street. So that's, and you ever saw that in a plan? The other thing my concern is, is rotary at Litchfield. Now, there's two gas stations on either side and I noticed that the rotaries that we have in, down Sterling and so forth, don't have a lot of business and traffic coming out of those gas stations. So my concern is that we'd be able to, we'd be able to handle all that traffic. I want to talk about that. That's my, that's my question.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, we've been working with the gas stations to try to make sure, you know, we can get the tanking trucks in and out. So, you know, that's on...
How about the traffic light down at Central?
The traffic lights, in order to put a traffic light in, it has to be, we have to, it has to be warranted. There's certain triggers that will allow us to, to use state and federal funds to install a signal. Various triggers, I mean, accident rates, you know, volumes, there's a few of them. We can, we can take a look to see if we can meet the warrants at that location to put a signal in. But we can't, we can't put a signal in with federal funds without it meets the certain triggers that are allowed.
If you don't have a high accident rate because they come down Dogwood, the traffic comes down Dogwood, they don't go down, down the rest of it. Right on the Central.
We can look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Steve Cody, C O T E. I live in Meadowport Park. I've been there for about 30 years, so I've seen that area and that old section of the road quite a bit. I like the road as a lot, I think they work fine. I like the road as a lot, I think they work fine, in the right place. I bet you all the roaders that everybody has talked about, but this is the only spot where I've seen a rotary where there was so much going on before and after, all the way to town, all the way to the other light, but there's a lot of people, there's a lot of businesses, there's a lot of homes, there's condos, there's everything, and it takes people a long time to get out, because you don't be able to give it a minute before. The only chance you get is when there's a traffic break on the lights. I think you could do a nicer lighting system there, I don't know why there's no turn on red at some of those spots, I think it would work better, people are gonna have trouble getting, getting out of the gas stations if there's a steady flow, and I think all of us are gonna be fighting like that. Don't put a rotary to save accidents in that spot, and cause accidents along the old freshman road, where people are trying to come in and out of all the side streets, and where they live, and the businesses. And I think there's a long time coming, the road really needs to be fixed, we need the sidewalks, I think it's a great thing to do, but I wish you would consider, when you look at that possibility, how the traffic's gonna flow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, my name is Travis Condon, I'm C-O-N-D-O-N. I'm a lifelong likeness to the resident, actually grew up on the side of town, so I'm quite familiar, grew up off of William Street, so I'm very familiar with this project, with this whole area, almost got hit by a bike a few times, they're growing up. Tonight, I'm actually here representing the North Side of Massachusetts Chamber of Commerce as their Public Empires Manager. We do appreciate the effort that was put into having a tight presentation, and want to thank you for doing this. The Chamber understands the need for infrastructure improvements, and we know how much they can improve the economy of the area, how much they can improve the area when they're done right. We have a number of businesses who are members, who are gonna be directly, indirectly affected by this, and just throughout this whole process, we ask that you please work with them, I'm not against them, please listen to them, they deal with this traffic day in and day out, they have some great ideas and some great input, and as it moves forward, we also encourage you to please take all the steps that you can to mitigate the effects on their businesses and their operations. I know you posted some of the detours and things that might be happening, it looks like it's gonna be a lengthy process, so please try and, just mitigate the traffic as much as you can, so we can keep going with their business operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Once the project goes into construction, MassDOT is in charge of facilitating construction, so we'll have resident engineers, some engineers on site on a daily basis that'll, you know, be working with the abutters and coordinating with the city and the contractors, so, you know, we don't, we don't, MassDOT's not gonna go away in construction, we still have to have a presence up there, you know, to make sure everything's built according to plan, so I'm sure that our representatives out there, you know, they're out there on site, they'll be approachable and, you know, do the best we can to work with all the abutters. Yes, sir?
My name is Mir McDonald, as in Old McDonald Head of Farm, M-A-C-E. And I'm the Executive Director and Sunrise Assistant at the corner of Central Street and Bethout. I'd like to thank you for being here, and for everyone for having a good civil and civic discussion, and my city councilors for making sure that they're all here. As Travis just said, I'm very concerned about the ongoing, excuse me, ongoing operations of the businesses in the area during this, I had no idea there's over 15,000 car traffic count on this road, although in the 16 years of being at Sunrise, I've seen it expand quite a bit over the years. And the idea of a one-lane bridge, when, the one-lane road when you're doing the bridge, gives me significant pause for all of us, but primarily for my residents who, on a regular basis, we have an ambulance at our facility once a day, more than once a day. My concerns are also around lighting, the speed of traffic, and crosswalks, which I think my fellow citizens have been also articulating. The, I get the idea of sidewalks and bicycle lanes and multi-user use of the street. I don't live in Lemonster, I live in Sterling, but I sit on the Board of Directors for Aging Services of North, North Central Massachusetts, formerly Montechuset Home Health, which represents 21 communities in North Central Massachusetts. And it's, it's the local access point for seniors, my representation is particularly around seniors, I don't see a lot of teenagers in this room. We're all getting older, and we're not all gonna be able to drive, we may, we may bicycle, we may walk, but that's not for everyone, it's still primarily a car-driven community in, on the south side of Lemonster, and I just want to remind us all that it's, different populations have different requirements and priorities. Again, thank you for being here and for keeping us all informed, and look forward to future discussions as the project moves along. Thank you.
My name is Dean Pogheer, I own DJ's Auto Care, living in Central Street.
Spell your last name, please.
My concern is the bike lane. I'm a cyclist, and I've done the Pan Masher four times, but to put a bike lane on Central Street is not a good idea, there's too many ins and outs, somebody's gonna get hurt, you know, and I just feel we should use that for something else. You know, sidewalks I can see, but bike lanes, I would never go down Central Street, even with a bike light, because there's too many ins and outs, you've got people coming from all different directions, you're right there to have eyes around your head. You'd be safer to put a bike lane on Route 2, because it's that, nobody enters there, you know, a couple of spots, but Central Street, not a good idea, it's just, and that's 10 feet of pavement that we could use for something else, I think, you know, and I'm a cyclist, but I know where I shouldn't be, and that's a place I don't want to be, so that's my concern, and sidewalks, better lighting for sure. My place only has an in and out, I have two entrances, but I have one where people come in and one where they leave. I'm not super wide, but I got enough, I gotta have enough to then, one to exit and one to come in, I got two, two spots. I own 1150, and I own 1160 next door. So I just think, you know, instead of the bike paths, especially on Route 12, something else should be dealt with that, you know, like a turnoff or an extra lane for somebody to turn on, that'd be safer, maybe do something like that, but, like I say, it's just, and I've been here since 86, and I'll bet you I even seen 25 bikes come down this road, so, especially now, it's busy, so, I don't, that's, that's my, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. In order to capture the federal funding, we have to accommodate bicycles on any of our projects now. There's a lot of different ways to do that, the way we're doing on this project is probably the least intrusive, you know, you can have off-road like accommodations that require a lot of property takings, but the bottom line is, we can't, we can't build, it's very difficult to capture, get the funding, if we don't accommodate all users, pedestrians and cyclists, so we think we're doing, on this project, we're doing, you know, without having too many impacts to abutters.
My name's Robert Newton, N-E-W-T-O-N, I'm on 4404 Drive, but I also happen at an office at 1205 Central Street, which is right on the corner of Central and Willard, where the lights are, that's part of this project. Is there, I know that's been redone, I mean, I remember when that was just a blinking yellow light, red light, back in the day, and it hasn't improved since, but could I hear a little bit more as to the exact improvements, since I'm right at that corner? And my main concern is also just the LTL trucks that usually go in and around that intersection a lot to go towards Gitec. Why they don't just take the further exit off 190 up to Sterling to go to Gitec and rather take Willard Street is beyond me, but is what it is. And the other question I had is, you were mentioning about the bike lanes, I prefer passing lanes because just right now, as things are with Brooks Pond and more tenants coming in, it's already becoming really busy, and with a rotary, maybe it might slow down traffic, but if I had to choose between the two, nothing against bikers either, but I think just lower traffic, I think would be better than, than anything else, so, thank you.
Yeah, as far as the improvements on Willard Street, how that will be, the setup and the lane configuration will be somewhat to notice today. We're not making any curb line changes or anything like that, anything major. The big improvements there are two, a lot of pedestrian signals, with, you know, video accessible push buttons and new countdown clocks, all those sort of improvements for pedestrians, because we are adding sidewalk from Willard Street down to the town line in Sterling. We are, you know, putting back all the same turn lanes, and there will be new signal equipment along with detectors in the roadway, that detect when the car is there, so that way like the timing of the signals will be optimized to allow traffic to pour through the intersection, whereas right now, I don't believe there's any of that sort of equipment there today. So those are the main improvements, but as far as the turn lanes that are there today and the geometrics of the roadway, that will largely remain with ways today.
My name is Kathy Peloquyn Weller, P-E-L-O-Q-U-Y-N dash W-E-L-L-E-R. I live at 41 Karen Street in Lemonster, which is off of Grant Street, and in the morning, I need to come out of the break, the bottom of Grant Street and take a left to go through town to go check on my dad. Trying to get out of Grant Street in the morning at 8 o'clock is impossible. It either forces me to go through Dogwood, or to go around to Willard Street and catch the lights. I don't know how you're gonna slow this speed down, there's nobody doing 40 coming down Central Street in the morning, they're doing 50 or more, because they wanna get to wherever they happen to go. I can sit there for five to seven minutes trying to take a left-hand turn, and there are people trying to inch around me into the used car parking lot to get through and around me, so that I can't now see if I can take a left-hand turn, because of the oncoming traffic coming in from Sterling. I don't know how you're gonna do this, I really have a major concern that taking away a light, that's the only time I get to pull out, is those two lights and stop the traffic, like previous people have said. If you don't have that, how do you stop the traffic? And how do you get people to drive 30 on that road that you've already given them 40? You need to figure that one out, too, and we just, we just need to have a better way of doing this. And, and I'm concerned about all the businesses and trying to take left-hand turns into businesses, as well as everybody else, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, that's a concern, I understand, you know, hearing everybody tonight, that you won't have that break in the traffic at a signal. You know, if somebody hits a red light, if you're trying to get out of a side street, take a left, you get a little break, and with a roundabout, it will slow the traffic down, because you cannot go 50 miles an hour through that intersection, you won't be able to anymore, you're gonna have to go slower, so.
Yeah, at the roundabout, that's at the gas station, Grant Street is at, at least a half, three quarters of a mile beyond that, they're gonna be picking that speed right back up to try and get through that whole intersection. You're gonna get them right back up to that 40, 40-plus mile an hour, really quickly. The rotary will stop them there, but it won't stop them the rest of the way.
Right, well, you mentioned the roundabout, taking out the signal, that's why I mentioned that.
I understand that, but it's not gonna stop the traffic once it gets out of that rotary, it's not gonna keep it at 30.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
So we can come a second round, right? Yeah. I just wanna speak a little bit on the comment. Oh, Gary Zouy. I'm in Chapman Place, yeah, I'm not against bikes, but you mentioned, for the federal assistance, you need to have bike lanes. This is a problem I have with the government, you look at all the businesses, all the ins and outs of this road, and you have bikes coming down, and now you have to watch out for bike lanes, mind the traffic that's going on, that a better study, again, possibly, as DJ's Auto talked about, as Peter Vemsey talked about, is having the turn lanes, which could end up being more safer by using, utilizing the second 10 feet to let traffic go in and out of these businesses all along this whole route, because there is a ton of businesses, residential, Chapman Place, Fallbrook, Metal Brook, Brooks Pond, everything coming in and out, and it's sad that you can't put an exception to the federal government and say, this study shows us better, because you're gonna stop your bike lanes at the end of your construction, they don't continue anywhere else, it's the way they go, nowhere. So it really doesn't make any sense unless they go all the way downtown, or they go to another bike path in the other range, because it really stops, and there could be no sidewalks maybe, I don't know if it's at each end, but going downtown to sidewalks, there's no bike down. So it's sad that you can't go back for an exception, federal government, federal funding, if the study shows that having these turnouts, turn-ins is better for the traffic in this area because of all the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jason Pare, P-A-R-E, I'm a resident of Lemonster, and I'm generally in favor of your proposal. I like the majority of the proposals that you guys put together. I'm not afraid of the rotary, you talked about the safety issues that you're trying to deal with, you have to weigh the costs and the benefits of moving a lot of cars through conveniently versus the safety factor. You get a lot of dense residential there, you have two youth athletic fields there, there's a lot of kids, we talked about Brooks Pond and 740 Central, a lot of people crossing there, we get a lot of good feedback about lighting. It seems to me that having more lanes and wider roads will increase traffic speed versus narrower lanes and traffic calming, right, slowing the traffic. Generally, I think that's a good idea in that whole discussion. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or would like to talk?
I'm just gonna add from what you just had mentioned, yeah, you're gonna slow down at the rotary, it's two lanes now, one each way, but people go 40 and 50, you're gonna slow down at the rotary and go right back, and everybody on the rest of the road is gonna be trying to get in and out. I know of somebody that went from Metal Brook Acre, crossed to the town and was hit, and he still hasn't had his scalp put back on, where he lost some pieces, so, it's a dangerous place. Rotary will only slow them down for a couple, you got a mile from town and almost a mile to the other. You know how fast people can reduce speed, so, that's our concern.
Yeah, I think, you know, the outside of the rotary, I understand, it'll be easier to pick up speed again, but traffic in the hearing, you know, the, the philosophy is if you have a narrower lane, not as much wide open pavement, more defined lanes, you know, and even curves, it gives you a more confined look, and hence the slow traffic now. You know, so we're trying to apply as many traffic calming techniques we have in our book, in that card, try to get the speeds down a little bit. If you have a wider road, you know, with If you have a wider road, you know, with, instead of 11-foot lanes, you know, you have no shoulder, wide, people tend to drive faster. So, you know, we're trying to apply as many techniques that we can to slow traffic down.
The only thing that's making it...
Sir, I'm trying to hear if you know the number.
I'm sorry. The only thing that will make that narrow is a bike lane. And once those lines have been blocked away, they'll, you know, run over a hundred times and it's gone. You're going to be right where we are right now.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'd like to remind you again that, you know, you can write in, you can fill out the sheet and send in any comments or questions you have within 10 days of tonight, and it'll be part of the record. You can write in or email anytime, you know, after the 10 days, and, you know, we'll get back to you. Again, the, the city has the latest plans and they will have the latest plans as we go through the design. So if you have questions, you know, you know, you're more comfortable talking to the city by all means, and then, you know, they can work through us to answer your questions or comments. I'd like to thank the city for having us use this nice road tonight. Thanks, thank you for coming out, and I'd like to declare this hearing closed at 8:04. Thank you.